All right, now we're ready. All right. Good evening, everybody. Time's still seven o'clock. We're going to get this meeting started. So with that, Deb, would you please call order?
Counselor Williams, Counselor Hansi.
Here.
Counselor Perser.
Here.
And Counselor Parrish is excused absent. Counselor Quigley.
Here.
And Counselor Miller.
Absent.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask everybody to stand for a moment of silence and we'll follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. We have an agenda before us. Deb, are there any changes?
There are no changes to the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Great.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
First and second, any discussion?
None.
Deb?
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Hansi.
Yes.
Counselor Perser.
Yes.
Counselor Quigley. Counselor Miller. Motion passes five zero.
All right. We have one proclamation tonight proclaiming July 2025 as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Fruta, and Erin has eagerly volunteered to read.
Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Fruta. And whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy activity communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increase tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas parks and recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of air we breathe, provide vegetation buffer to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas our parks and recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas the city of Fruta recognizes the benefits derived for parks and recreation services. Resources.
Thank you very much, Erin. And Mark, I can't see that far back.
I don't see him.
Yeah. Oh. Mark. Are you there?
I'm showing him up there.
Hello, Mark. He's not there.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
You guys do it.
Come on up.
Come on up.
They never tell me anything. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you.
Very nice.
Here we go.
So you got to get your picture taken.
Okay.
Offer great spaces for people to enjoy wellness of all kinds, their mental wellness, their physical wellness. And we're based out of the so we just sort of around here. So there's so many programs that we offer for people of all ages. And we love what we do, so we just appreciate all the support from our patrons. And yeah. And you guys think?
Yeah, thank you. So we're excited for this month, but we're always excited throughout the whole year to plan for rooming and different things. So we have some good ideas and good things that we're going to promote community and just more acknowledgement of what's going on through parks.
Great.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Well, thank you, guys. So. And you have to have your picture taken, just so you know. Yeah.
Yes.
You guys do a great job. One of my favorite things is at Arbor Day with the tree planting with all the kids and they come out and they plant the trees and get them all with shovels. I think I've done it three years. So far, nobody's hit another kid with a shovel. So, well done.
Wanted to win.
Yes. All right. Next, we're going to move on to public participation in our consent agenda. This section is set aside for the city council.
Sorry.
My time's up. The city council will listen to comments by the public regarding items that do not otherwise appear on the agenda or that are on the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are items where all conditions or requirements have been agreed to or met prior to the time they come before the council for final actions. These items will be approved by a single motion of the council. Members of the council or public may ask an item be removed from the consent section and fully discussed. All items not removed from the consent section will then be approved. A member of the council may vote no on a specific item without asking that they be removed from consent section for full discussion. Any item that is removed from consent agenda will be placed at the end of the consent agenda. And we ask that everybody, please limit their comments to a three-minute period. And if you do come up to speak, I ask that you please give your full name and address into the microphone. Once again, you'll have three minutes to speak. And for respect and make sure everybody can heard, we ask that there's no cheering, jeering, clapping, sign-holding, and I'm sure I'm forgetting something else. But even though we may not respond to what is being said, we are 100% listening. So with that, I'd like to open it up if anybody would like to make public comment. You're next.
Just a new functioning one that will stay where it's at.
Hopefully it'll work.
So long term, come for good. They see they can help with the complex residents and have a lot for the front. These are big decisions and they should include community. But the truth is, the way it's written, it makes it hard for most people to understand what's being proposed, let alone how it affects. The language is legal, it's dense, and it's written at a college reading level. I just graduated and I have put it seven times to get you to understand what was being said. That means that any community members, including busy parents, seniors, people with disabilities, and those whose first language is English, may not be able to fully engage with issues or feel confident asking questions. If you say you want public input, which you said you did, you have to make public input possible. Accessibility isn't just about wheelchair rooms and buttons to open doors. It's about language. That means using plain language in summaries, public notices, and public comment invitation. It means being transparent, not just legally, but correctly. Because people can't participate in decisions that they can't understand. Clear communication builds trust and trust builds community. Let's make sure everyone has a fair chance to speak up, be heard, and understand what's being done. Does the observer have the chance to achieve for this future?
Thank you.
Thank you. So another hand up there?
Yeah, it's working.
There. Okay.
We need Tessa to come up and repeat what she just said. No, I didn't mean that as a joke, just if the mic wasn't working.
People can hear it online, so we could have it repeated or it could be put in the minutes, whatever. It's best, yeah.
Well, let's hear from you, Perser.
Yeah. Okay. My name's David McKean, and I am C-K-E-A-N-D. I live at 208 South Maple, on the corner of Maple and McCune, right across from Reed Park. So this is a great thing to follow, parks and recreation, because I think parks and recreation, the one thing we want most of all is safety and fun. And so I'm here to talk about traffic speed. And I observe it and I finally, after many months, years of saying, I'm going to the meeting, going to the meeting, I'm not going to be one of those guys that sits on his front porch and just complains. So here I am to voice an official concern, not just a complaint that annoys me, but when the traffic speed limit is 30 miles an hour on Maple Street. And I'm not out there with a clicker, but I know people are driving 50, you know, especially in the morning and rush hour. And it's just a, it's from Aspen Street to 650 Highway thoroughfare. Now we have Reed Park that is very active, very well-done. Lots of skateboarders, lots of playground kids, lots of people down McCune. I'll talk about McCune traffic also simultaneously. That's 25 miles an hour. Just zoom. And I know it's a nationwide issue, you know, traffic speed and and problems thereof. So I'm just asking for recommending a simple solution. I mean, they put crosswalks in Maple and McCune, and that's great. That has helped. People actually, some slow down, but I observed two kids, mom was 50 yards behind them on their skateboards coming up. They stopped and zoom truck, you know, so the the simplest would be park. Kids playing 25 miles an hour, you know, slow down. A stop sign, you know, at Maple and McCune. I know it's an inconvenience. People have to get to home and work and drive fast and I, you know, that's just my, you know, that's what my, where my mind goes when I'm sitting on my front porch complaining. And but it's a concern for the kids. I have good neighbors, two small kids, 22 seconds, you know. I'm concerned about them. And I don't want to, finally I have come and I don't want to say, gosh, I would have gone and said something before something happens. Farmer's Market was, and it's not, that was, that was scary. I had to walk away when I saw people going and thank you.
Thank you, David, for coming.
Thank you.
Please come back again.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Um, I actually want to look back around. Are we good with Tessa's comments being captured?
Yeah, they can be included in the minutes and then as part of the transcript on when we do upload our YouTube video. That works, yeah. But it can also be repeated, probably either or works. Okay.
Are you good, Tess?
Transcript is good.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Of course.
It gets publicly.
Yeah.
All right. Is there anybody else that would like to come up and say anything? All right, with that, I'm going to close public participation and bring it back to council. We have a consent agenda before us. Are there any changes? Or not a change, sorry. Any questions or comments or concerns?
I do need to recuse myself from items D, E, and, I'm sorry, C, D, and E, please.
Okay. All right, so let's refrain from any discussion on C, D, and E while you're here. Is there any questions on any of the other items?
I'd like to just have further discussion on items F and H.
Okay. Why don't we do that? And we're just going to be aware of the conflict. Okay. Go ahead, Erin.
So with item F, can we just get a little bit more, some commentary? I'm just looking for more commentary on both items, just make sure we're as transparent as we can.
I know we've discussed this in the past, but it is a little confusing, the way it's worded. It's a little, the concept is a little confusing.
Dan Karras, Assistant City Manager, for the record. So Resolution 202524 is essentially a resolution authorizing us to establish a reimbursement agreement with the two entities that we have, a, not an MOU, but essentially like a commitment letter from Prop 123 to purchase property and explore developing that real estate. So part of that is a real estate transaction, then also the development. And so there are pre-development costs that are associated with that, that they're that they're spending without a purchase and sale agreement negotiated with the city. And so, much like we did with Lagoon's redevelopment back in 2018 and 19, we entered into a reimbursement agreement with, basically like in the event that the project doesn't move forward with either party, that we would reimburse those studies or investigations that are to the benefit of the city and the property that they've expended.
And so what kind of, can you just go into a little bit more detail on what those costs would be? Is there traditional, I would assume there are traditional costs that are incurred during real estate transactions?
So the biggest one is the environmental. So I mean, there's the, there's the phase one environmental, and then there's the cleanup that could potentially be required in order to get cleared to close from CHAF. There was the appraisal. There's some survey work and some title work and also some, I think there was some preliminary soils investigation, don't quote me on that, but there's a handful of items. And then the other exercise that we're going to want to go through is just sort of like a layout, you know, of like, can we make the access locations work and do some of the investigation that kind of be like the first step to be cleared to take the next step. And we wanted to do that because that obviously will put the the council and the housing authority in a position to make an informed decision on whether they want to move forward with the project.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other questions on this topic before we let Dan go?
If we end up moving forward with the project, is that money? Does that, how does that work at that point?
It's in.
It.
We don't pay anybody back. They, it's, it's
Part of the agreement of the cost of moving forward.
It's part of the stack, yeah. The only thing that I want to mention is that this excludes the legal fees. Oftentimes, since we're kind of, we're doing that voluntarily to explore the projects. A lot of times with the tax credit developments, those monies get negotiated and we get paid back. Because it's their, at the end of the day, it's their project, regardless of what the deal is. We're spending city funds or housing authority funds to try to come up with an agreement. And we'll negotiate to try to get paid back for those, similar to how we did with the Muse, which I believe was in the $50,000 range. So, yeah. Just for record. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then.
Any other questions before that?
For F?
For H?
And A?
For, for F.
That was for F.
Any questions on F?
Good.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. All right.
Any?
On H?
Yeah. Yeah, and H is Resolution 202527 that allows the city manager or the assistant city manager to move forward with signing any documents required to pursue annexation for a jointly owned property that we own off 16 and L with the school district. So the school district has requested that we move forward with at least beginning the annexation process. So like any other annexation petition or zoning petition that will come before the city council, but since we are a property owner, we need to have the authorization to at least start that process and move forward. They've been working with a few things on a project out there with the county. Have been having difficulty with their conditional use permit with the county. So I think it benefits them to annex that land into the city and then be subject to our land use requirements and whatnot. And there's no costs involved going forward for any party if it just, like, there's no property tax now, there's not going to be proper tax after. No, no, the only cost is probably just minimum staff time if we have any sort of reporting requirements with that. What corner of 16 and L is it? Oh, I'd have to look. Southeast, yeah. Southeast? Yeah. Wonderful. I appreciate it. That's all I And I did get clarification, so Tessa's public comment, what we were able to hear is just very light. So we'll try to bump up the audio as much as we can on the recording, so apologize about that. It's a new, it's a new mic stand. We forgot to turn it back on. Yeah.
Appreciate you double checking. Thank you.
Of course. Yep. Thank you. All right.
All right. Anybody else have any questions on anything? All right. Should we do this in two votes, since Amy has to abstain? Should we do everything but C, D, and E?
Yeah. Hello, it's me, Mary Elizabeth Geiger, City Attorney. Yes, I would go ahead and do the items that Counselor Miller does not have to recuse from. And then Counselor Miller will need to just step out of the room in case you guys do have any discussion on those three items for which she has to recuse. And once you guys finish your vote on that, then she can return.
All right, so we'll need a motion to approve A, B. All right, you got it, F and G?
I move to approve A, B, F, G, and H on the consent agenda.
The first? Okay. Second? Any further discussion on these items?
None.
Deb, would you kindly poll council?
Counselor Hansi?
Yes.
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley? Counselor Miller?
Yes.
And Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, thank you very much. See ya. All right. Now that Amy has left the room, any questions or comments on item C, D, or E?
None.
I move to approve items C, D, and E.
First? First and second, any additional discussion? Yep?
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Hansi?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Great, thank you. We should probably be nice and let Amy know we're done. Thank you.
After a heated discussion.
Mr. Cuffs.
Yeah.
Could you hear the yelling?
Rotary Club's really loud.
Going down over there, boy.
All right. Thank you, everybody. All right, next, we're going to move into our public hearing and action items.
Mr. Mayor, did you want, did you want to acknowledge the reappointment of a board?
Thank you very much.
Member?
I appreciate that. As always, we do like to acknowledge those that step up and choose to volunteer and serve our community. And I would like to acknowledge Denise Heights for her continued passion and service on the Historic Preservation Board. So thank you, Deb.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Deb Woods. I'm the City Clerk for the city of Fruta, and I am presenting the new hotel and restaurant liquor license application from Josephine's Fruta LLC, doing business as Josephine's. The liquor license application and all the fees have been submitted by Jeffrey Snook and Jody Corey with Josephine's Fruta LLC. The new restaurant will be located at 169 South Mulberry, which was the former home of Monument Powder Coating. Hotel and restaurant liquor licenses allow the sale and consumption on premises of malt, venus, and spirituous liquors if at least 25% of gross sales is from the sale of food. And the applicants have affirmed that this is, this will be the case for Josephine's, which will be featuring Italian food and drink, and everybody's very excited about that. So pursuant to the Colorado Liquor Code, the city council may consider only two things when approving a liquor license. The first is the character of the applicant's. Background checks on Jeffrey and Jody came back clear, and law enforcement agencies that the checks were done through include the CBI, Colorado Bureau of Investigation, Mesa County Sheriff's Office, and the Grand Junction, Palisade, and Fruta Police Departments. The other item that the council may consider when approving a liquor license is the needs of the neighborhood. And Jeffrey and Jody submitted a neighborhood survey that was signed by eight people, all of whom were in favor of the issuance of the liquor license, and none were in opposition of it. I would also like to note for the record that the applicants requested a concurrent review of their application, and state liquor enforcement has completed their review of the application and has approved it. They're only waiting on the local approval before issuing the liquor license. So the recommended motion is that the council move to approve the application for a hotel and restaurant liquor license for Josephine's located at 169 South Mulberry Street. And that concludes my presentation. Both Jeffrey and Jody are present in the audience. I saw, Mr. Mayor, that you met them, but I would like to introduce them to the rest of the council and see if they have
Would you like to come up and say a few words before we open it up to the public? Sure, you don't have to, but go for it.
Jeff Snook, Jeffrey is on the application. I go by Jeff. My wife, Jody Corey. We are, I think, as excited as everybody else from what we hear to open this restaurant in Fruta. We have been coming to Fruta since probably 2002. And we've had this opportunity over the last year, and we are excited to have this opportunity. We're excited to have the support of the community, especially of the mayor and city council, the community, city managers, et cetera. Don't know what else to say other than we are excited to be a part of the community in Fruta. We own a restaurant in Palisade as well as a boutique motel, and I feel like we we work really hard to prove ourselves and have a good name. And we think we can do the same here, so. I'm the talker. I won't, I won't shut up. So happy to answer any questions about Josephine's personally.
We'll have to open up the public comment and then we'll come back to council.
Great. Cool.
So with that, I would like to open it up to public comment. Is anybody, would anybody like to come up and speak? All right, with that, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to council.
I say, woo-hoo. Yeah, so excited. Cannot wait.
I move to approve the issuance of a new hotel and restaurant malt, venus, and spirituous liquor license for Josephine's Fruta LLC, doing business as Josephine's located at 169 South Mulberry Street.
Amy got that one. Normally, I'm the one that asks for a motion.
I just want to get this one on the board. Let's get some.
All right, we have a
I'm ready for some baked lasagna in my life.
First and second, any additional questions coming?
I had one question. Are you related to the Snooks family of Snooks Bottom?
Been getting that question since 2002. Not. We are Iowa folk and grew up in Delaware, but we are not related to Snooks Bottom or Snooks Bottom Barbecue, unfortunately. We're going to make our own name.
All right. You're still welcome. To be in our community.
Thank you very much.
Are related.
Okay. Now technically, we're supposed to have the motion. We have a motion. We have a second. All right.
Make a motion wherever you want.
I can make a motion whenever I want.
Counselor, Counselor Quigley? Counselor Miller?
Absolutely.
Counselor Williams?
The biggest yes I've ever given, yes.
Counselor Hansi?
Yes.
Counselor Perser?
Indeed.
Motion passes five zero.
That sounded like America's Got Talent. Golden buzzer, you would have hit it.
I mean, only if you make a burrito, then are you allowed?
Just kidding. All right, with that, we're going to go ahead and move on to our administrative agenda. Resolution 2025, a resolution. My screen is glitching. Sorry, there we go. Resolution 2025, a resolution imposing a suspension upon the city's processing of applications for the approval of pending or new service plans for Title 32 special districts. And our city attorney, Mary Elizabeth Geiger, is going to be presenting on this one. So it's off to you, Mary Elizabeth.
Okay, I'm having issues there. Oh, hold on. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. So this is, you guys had a discussion in your last council meeting about metro districts and wanting to ensure that the city had a policy in place for considering such applications or considering such service plans. Metro districts are one type of special district under Title 32. Title 32 also includes water and sanitation districts, park and recreation districts, among others. So this, you know, as requested by council to allow for that time for you guys to kind of dig in and develop a policy before you start considering any service plans. We have drafted this resolution, and it applies only to those Title 32 districts. So it does not apply to So it does not apply to GID, which is General Improvement District, TIFs, tax increment financing, you know, any other mechanism for public financing. It's only those Title 32 districts. And so I guess I would ask you guys to take a look at that resolution, see if the, you know, if there's anything in there you do have a question about, or if there's anything in there like timeline, you know, let me know, because we can also amend it during this meeting if we need to.
All right, with that, bringing it back to council, any questions or discussions on this? I know we need to workshop kind of what to do next.
This is pretty much exactly what we asked them to do so that we could workshop it. Yeah, it's a pause button.
I appreciate that we're, you know, I appreciated our discussion the other day, and to say here is that we, we have a culture of doing things in the right order, and what's right and fair for the community and it's for our staff policies and procedures in place before we start taking actions on one-offs or whatnot. So I really appreciate that we can continue that, that approach that we have. And so I look forward to establishing policy and procedures in the future.
The only reason I'm gonna bring this up is because VOG did, but the timeline part of it, can we talk about what the timeline does look like? And the only reason, again, that I want, not only because she mentioned it, but there was an item that was wanting to be done, and that was kind of what prompted us to pump the brakes a little bit. So can we talk about what we're looking like moving forward with this one?
Sure. So the way it's currently written is the term is from the date tonight that you adopt this resolution up until you actually adopt a policy. So if that takes you guys three months, and you, you know, have your workshops and feel good about it and get it done, then once that policy is adopted, this pause is lifted, and you guys are in place to be able to consider service plans. Six months, six months, you know, so I didn't bake in a specific deadline just to allow you guys to make sure, like with other things the city's got going on, scheduling meetings, et cetera, that you, you know, just had time to do it. So it's really gonna be up to you guys how quickly you dive into that subject and adopt a policy and potentially a model service plan.
Do you think we should do it in a timely manner? Like, we shouldn't?
Yeah. How's that looking for stat? Like, do you guys have a plan around it?
Yeah, I think generally, we could probably get a policy and a model service plan probably in place between six and 12 months. Sometimes they do just take a little bit, mostly just because we want to workshop with council, but also discuss, you know, what are we looking for in these special districts and what would help you make decisions on those? Luckily, we do have our special counsel, Don Kelly, has actually done a few of these policies, and he's very familiar with the Title 32 districts. So I feel like we're in a really good place to kind of kick off probably here in the next few months, kind of a workshop, and then kind of continue discussing, you know, what these are, why the policy is important, why the model service plan is important, and probably go from there. But generally, I think if you want to do it right, not that three months is out of the question, but I'd say it's probably six to 12 months total.
Appreciate that.
So do we have a tentative date for a workshop yet, or that's still TBD?
Yeah, it's probably TBD, but I would imagine the next couple of months is like a kickoff. We do have a few things coming up, so it could be August, could be September, really depends on scheduling as well. So probably sometime in the next few months.
Thank you. Anything else?
I just want to echo what Erin said and add to not only quote unquote "the right way", but just not on anyone, like that we're taking the ti, our own timeline, not specific to anybody, you know, a certain project or anything else, but just the timeline to get all the information that we need to make an informed decision. It just seems like the most fair and equitable way to approach all of these projects. So I'm really happy with this resolution, so thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? All right, no other discussion? Need a motion?
Oh, now you need a motion?
I'm looking at you to see if you want to.
I'm not saying.
I know you're not so eager on this one.
Involve baked lasagna, so I'm like, it's okay.
I move to approve 2025-25, a resolution imposing a suspension upon the city's processing of applications for the approval of pending or new service plans for Title 32 special districts.
Second.
First and second, any additional questions or comments? I just want to reiterate, thank you for the drafting of this, and I appreciate that we're putting a pause on this to do it right. So thank you all. All right, Deb?
Counselor Miller? Counselor Williams?
Yes.
Counselor Hansi?
Yes.
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley? Motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much. With that, we're moving out of administrative and heading over to our city manager for his report. Shannon, take it away.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Just two quick items on the city manager's report tonight. The first one is that the fireworks for the 3rd of July are still on, and it looks like we will be good to go on Thursday night. We've been working with our fire chief and also our fire marshal, both over at Lower Valley Fire District, and coordinating with them on if we should continue with the show, given that Mesa County moved to Stage One fire restrictions last Friday. But after they met with other local agencies and federal agencies as well, they think they'll have more than enough resources to help out and make sure that we can continue with the 3rd of July fireworks show. They'll have a full staff there, and then also BLM is sending an engine as well, and then the Mesa County Wildland Fire Rescue Team will be there as well. So we feel pretty good about the show on Thursday night, pending any high winds or anything too crazy. But as of right now, we were gonna make the decision on whether to move forward with the show today, and we have decided to continue with that. The only other update I have is today was our Public Works Director's Kimberly Bowlen last full day in office. It is definitely, she will definitely be missed. She is heading over to the City of Grand Junction to serve as their deputy city manager. So we're, we'll, we'll definitely miss her. She was such a great addition. She's accomplished so much over at Public Works just in her four, four short years here, but we're super excited for her in that new role. I think Dan and I probably spent an hour and a half with her this afternoon, and she was trying to kick us out of her office. It was, it was, it was good to catch up, and it was good to hear from her and also talk about planning for kind of what's next in that role for the city. So in the meantime, we have appointed our deputy Public Works Director, John Corillo, as interim, so he'll start in that role, I believe, tomorrow, and then she'll kind of wrap things up next Wednesday and just probably have a half day. But I'm pretty sure everyone knows John, but I was gonna give him the opportunity if he wants to say anything to council tonight. He's been with the city for seventeen, seventeen years, and has worked his way up through a variety of different positions. When I started, he was utilities crew leader, then supervisor, now Public Works Deputy Director, now interim. So got to meet with John this afternoon, got to talk about all the things we're working on in Public Works, and I think he's gonna do a great job in that role, so super excited. But yeah, I'll turn it over to you. Yeah.
Mayor, Council, thank you. Seventeen years with Public Works. Kind of been through it all, really excited to support this community, or our council and our organization. So not too much to say, but forward. We have a good plan going forward. Continue.
Thank you for stepping up as interim. And taking that over. Greatly appreciate it. So nothing gets skipped, and we continue to move forward.
Yeah.
See, we're so sexy. Is that gonna continue, or are we gonna?
Or are we changing?
Map that down a little bit.
It smells like money to me.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not making a logo for that one. It smells like money, no.
Yeah. Well, thank you all very much. Thanks.
Thanks, John.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, John. That's all I have of my report. Thanks, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Right. Thank you very much. With that, I'm gonna bring it back.
I want to ask Shannon a question.
Oh, sure.
Since Mesa County is gonna do that moratorium on the fireworks, do we know if Grand Junction is gonna do theirs?
As far as I'm aware, and we've been talking each day, it seems like they're going to, because theirs is on Friday. So the Stage One fire restrictions prohibits the personal use of fireworks, so you can still have professional shows as well. So the schedule is tomorrow night at Booklift Country Club is the first show, and then ours is on Thursday, and then Junction's is on Friday. So yeah, barring any extreme weather, it looks like we'll probably be good to go, and they'll just have a lot of crews on site in case anything were to happen.
Yeah, that was the only reason I was gonna ask, because if they did decide to, that would probably up our.
Right.
Attendance, so we would probably want to work around that a little bit.
Right, right.
Cool.
Yeah, and I have not been told whether or not they've decided to cancel. As far as I'm aware, yeah, everyone's moving forward.
Perfect.
Saw it today that they were.
Oh, yep, yep.
So piggyback on that, because I know I've gotten messages, two messages about it in terms of enforcement of the local, the local flair for personal fireworks. And kind of do we enforce that, and what is our general policy around that?
Yeah, we definitely, we definitely do. So I talked to that same resident, and she had very valid concerns. She said, you know, where she lives in downtown, there's usually a lot of fireworks, especially this time of year, none yet where she lives. But, you know, anytime there is something, I mean, you definitely call our non-emergency line, and usually it's enforced through, you know, like a nuisance kind of code, because Mesa County is the one that actually has the fire restrictions. But they try to respond to those, but it is very difficult to enforce, because generally, people have to be caught, you know, shooting off their, their fireworks. But I did have a chance to talk to her and also a few other residents about it and what to do.
Thank you.
Of course.
All right, any other questions for Shannon? All right, Janine, why don't you kick us off?
Okay. Yeah, it was, I know we're not really debriefing about CML right now, so I won't go into detail, but it was lovely to be with everyone who was there, so that's all about that right now. I, I did want to chat a little bit about the comet on Maple and McCune, and then also add on to that, like that McCune and Peach intersection is equally concerning. You can't see, like the, even though there is a stop sign on McCune for Peach, like you can't, people can't see. And so they just, they're coming way far out on McCune, and they can't see Peach, because there's cars parked all the way along. And then, yeah, wondering about the possibility of children at play or some sign like that near. I mean, it makes sense, in my opinion, by a park to have something like that, but wanted to see what everyone else's thoughts on that were and what you all think.
I think any ideas for traffic coming, this has come up before, and we've added the crosswalks. And I, I mean, I think taking it again to the traffic committee would probably be a good idea.
Yes, I, you know, and I don't have the knowledge now if those signs work or if people that are gonna speed.
Well, anyway.
Well, anyways, I don't have that knowledge base.
Yeah, and I know in previous, this was maybe even a year ago, but we had talked about trying to personalize a little bit more toward Fruta versus like what the state codes are, or, you know, like that, we're just, this is the kind of thing that doesn't feel like you can just rubber stamp, oh, that this many cars definitely means no, you don't, or definitely means yes, you do, and I don't know if we, yeah, yeah. I don't know if we want to talk about that any, you know, more or not, because I know right now we're going by guidelines. Whoa, if this many cars go by, then that, that means it deems a four-way stop or whatever. But it, and like, I didn't bring this up last time, but I just know that it has been brought up in the past, that maybe something a little bit more specific to Fruta's needs.
We asked the, the traffic committee to maybe kind of wrap their head around it a little bit and see if they could come up with a few different ideas on, on our approach.
All right, what I was gonna say is I feel like we're kind of in a void up here of not knowing. Would it make sense either in a workshop or as a presentation, just to have somebody from that team come up and say, hey, here's how we view things, here are things that may seem like, like common knowledge that should work, that don't, and here's things that seem counterintuitive that work.
When do they get together?
Education around this.
When do they get together next, Shannon? Do we?
I'd have to take a look, but we can definitely, definitely do that. In the meantime, look at the inner, or the street that was brought up, that intersection, especially McCune and Peach. Yeah, that, the site is very difficult, because vehicles park on both sides. So yeah, you do have to go pretty far out. But yeah, we can easily add that to a future workshop and talk about those standards. And then also, in the meantime, look into the other areas that you discussed.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Better for the community to have it at a, at a public hearing. I know there's, it's a different dynamic, but it seems like more people come and participate.
Than like a workshop?
Yeah.
A workshop?
Work. I think more people participate in regular.
If it's a presentation, there's not the same.
Not to discuss.
To have those discussions.
What I was thinking is it would be nice to put it in the committee's hands and let them kind of come to us, whether they want to do a workshop, or they want to present, or whether they want to get public input, or if they want to have ideas.
Specific intersection.
Sure.
Talking about in general. I personally feel like I know nothing.
Me too.
About what's looked at and how to consider. So when talking to people.
Oh, sure.
And they're like, oh, this is a challenge.
This is how the decisions are made.
Correct, or like even like speed bumps, to me.
Well, we got two different things going. So that, you're on to something. I think we could all benefit from that. But then in the background, we also have something being worked on that particular intersection and including Peach. I think you're right. The sooner probably, the better that we can get that, so we can kind of wrap our head around the overall.
Yeah, and those are just conversations which I don't know.
Yeah, right. It's knowledge that we should have.
And then along those lines, I've had several people come to me about the crosswalks on Aspen Street downtown, which has the different colored concrete and the stamped, but it doesn't actually, it's not painted, which I am just like, I don't know if we want to paint that. I mean, but people do not treat, I mean, pedestrians think that's a crosswalk, and vehicle drivers do not. So one way or the other, we probably need to decide if those are actual crosswalks and people should be stopping for people crossing, or I don't mean we, just, I just mean it needs to be also a topic of conversation, yeah.
By all best. Have the right of wings.
No matter what.
Yes.
Yes, but how does that get communicated so people? Is it, is it signed? Is it, is there paint? Is there, whatever, you know, various things. It's come to me multiple times where people have asked me that, and to the point of where they're saying that they feel like it is changing the feeling of Fruta to them, because people are so uninterested in stopping for pedestrians. I am, that's, I'm just relaying public. Yep, and then one last thing, we, Mark and Carly and I went walking down Aspen Street yesterday to look about the possible places, sidewalk places for chalk on the block for downtown Fruta, which is happening August 22nd, for that Fourth Fri, while Fourth Friday is going on. So we picked, we found 22 spaces. So now Ally will talk to those businesses to make sure, but we are very conscientious to making sure we didn't pick any spaces that actually are right in front of the entryway, so no one's gonna be walking through chalk and then into a business and bringing chalk on their feet into the, and so, yep. But anyways, that was exciting, so that is, the planning for that is underway and looking good. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Erin?
Nothing.
All right. Ames?
Nothing for me.
So much pressure. Also, not gonna talk about CML, just excited to have that opportunity. I learned a lot. It gave me some topics to consider for further consideration, so I think that that's like a really awesome opportunity. Have that ability. Also, I went to two separate Family Health West, let's talk about behavioral health in the Fruta community. The first event that I went to was kind of more of a low-key, let's have coffee, let's talk to members of the community, let's kind of figure out what gaps we have, not just in Mesa County, but like specifically here in Fruta as far as access to mental health services, emergency services, sorts of things. So the, the first meeting was really good to have input from the community as far as, you know, what are the kinds of things that they feel like were lacking? Throughout some ideas as far as, you know, what we could possibly do, maybe some partnerships, maybe some grant opportunities. So that was a good start, and then this week, there was a follow-up. So that was a good start. And then this week there was a follow-up that was more stakeholders. So we, we had representatives from Mesa County, the co-response sergeant was there to kind of talk about what they do and what their model looks like. Members of Fruita Police Department were there, obviously Family Health West. And so just a good way to touch base with one another. Figure out what are we already doing? What are some other models out there? What are some things that we want to kind of move forward? I definitely don't think that it's the end of the conversation, but it is a good way to, to open up lines of communication and kind of see what we're doing. So I love having the opportunity to have those conversations.
Thank you.
Any else? Now I'm going to piggyback on that conversation, which I know we've had with Mind Springs and others, conversations about mental health, mental health in our community, mental health, I mean, from grade school all the way to seniors and kind of how do we take care of our own, like, you know, Fruita first. There were some conversations that came up at CML. I was talking to somebody, this is what they do for a living all around the country, and they were excited that this is something that we were struggling with, quite frankly. And now I have a second person that has offered to come in and talk to us in terms of how as council and from a policy standpoint, how to start thinking about this. This is because of what they do across the country. And help us get our, maybe our arms wrapped around where to kind of move, continue to move forward with that. So if that's something we want to get onto a workshop, we can try to get scheduled. One person's local, one person's not local. The non-local person, I think with pizza, I could get them to come to town. If not, they'll do it by Zoom, but I think I can do it with pizza. But if we want to get that on a workshop so we can start those discussions, it'd be great. Okay, so Shannon, tomorrow or Thursday, whenever we're meeting, we can start to pencil that in. And then the other conversation I've been having as an empty nester eating out a little bit more than normal. Some of the restaurants here are having some challenges in terms of letting people know that they have different menus or different hours. And what's I think very cool is as we have another restaurant opening up, we're starting to have more critical mass. And in my mind, it's like, you know, one fast food restaurant doesn't do well, two fast food restaurants always do better because of that. And I'm just kind of starting to bounce around this idea. If we can do something like Fruita Foodies or something like that, because I don't think everybody in the community is aware of all the different restaurants. So I just kind of want to throw that idea out there. If we could do, maybe do something to help promote all the restaurants. Or if that's something we should talk to the chamber to kind of say, hey, can you help pull something together? Just kind of wanted to get your thoughts on that.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it, you go ahead first.
I think that would be an appropriate role for the chamber.
Okay.
I don't know.
I only can, not concerned, but question, I guess, with chain, with the chamber is would they be willing to do it for everyone, whether they were a member or not? And if they are not, then maybe that is been a place that.
Well, I am the rep and I can certainly ask that question if they'd be willing to do it. Yeah, I just think it's something that, and I don't know if it's maybe a series of things is kind of sitting there late at night thinking about this. If we do like Fruita Foodies and then, you know, later we do something around professional services that are here. And then maybe a third one about retail or something.
That was more my concern, like just only focus like promoting a specific type of business. I, I don't, that makes me a little bit uncomfortable.
Yeah, in general, none of that is really our job.
Yeah.
No, but what I'm struggling with this is kind of it's like, you know, how do we think about economic development and what can we do? And I agree with you that there is overlap with the chamber. So if you guys are cool, I'll start that conversation with the chamber. I'll see what pushback there is in terms of members, non-members. And I'll let you know where that goes.
And Mr. Mayor, one thing I would add to for all businesses, well, most businesses in Fruita, we started offering those hospitality lodging toolkits where they actually get free marketing resources from our.
Photos, I think.
Yeah, marketing communications team, but our marketing communications coordinator, Ammon Pierce, has also begun doing trainings with local businesses that are completely free to attend, but just, you know, how does he use social media? How are we see other businesses? How can they like best utilize their social media and also other digital channels to market themselves and make sure people get the correct information, the correct menus, the correct hours, et cetera. So we, we had our first one last week, the toolkit. They went out and took pictures with Rimrock Rodeo, which I think that'll be great addition for them and for us, but we certainly hope to have more in the future. And they're actually doing a training with the Downtown Business Group this month and a few weeks. So hopefully that has some really good participation because it's a great resource for sure.
Does the business community find that resource?
Yeah, this one, the Downtown Business Community, one is that's a, that's a chamber group, but we'll probably, you know, start putting that out. That's available to any businesses, the training. And then we also have that toolkit.
On the south side and six and fifty corridor are also aware.
Is it on our website?
I'm not sure.
Website right now.
Right?
Plan to be on the website as soon as we can.
Okay, yeah.
That was a question, do we?
I don't believe it's on the website yet. Yeah, yeah, it's still being rolled out. We just had the one. We did the one training, which was at the F Works Coffee Club, which I think went, went great. So we'll continue to do those trainings and offering those to community members. The first training we did put out in our weekly update and on some of our social channels as well. So we'll just continue each time we do training to get the word out. Of course.
Looking over my list, I think that's all I've got.
It is on the website. I apologize.
It is?
Yeah, thank you, Ciara.
Oh, great.
All right. I'm very happy to say I don't think we have any reason to go into executive session. Yeah.
I, last time was enough.
Yeah, I think we've done it. Okay. Does anybody have anything else before?
Love you, Mary Elizabeth. We just don't need to.
Anybody have anything else before we join the meeting? All right, well.
I always tell, I always tell people that it's a really good thing when I don't hear from them for a long time. No worries. I'm not offended.
Good.
Thank you. All right, with that, the time is seven fifty-eight. Under an hour.
Shortest.
Never had that.
Ever.
That's literally the.
Best ever.
We're actually four minutes over our.
Seven fifty-four.
Have notes.
Yeah.